Everybody, welcome, welcome. You can come back, that's good. The throngs are here. We work from an agenda each month and based on what information that I'll receive, we'll put together an agenda usually about a week before the meeting and we'll then send that out to get set up. And, alright, look at that. Another thirty seconds. Yep, good. Since we are live, we just encourage citizens if they would like to participate in the town government and how it works a little bit, you, these are open sessions. We have plenty of seats. There's no charge to come, so. When we were doing my latest reading of the, of the plan, I realized that maybe we don't do that enough to openly invite people to come, so. I'm doing that. So, please, maybe somebody will show next month, of course, and join us. Not that we don't like seeing the both of you. Alrighty, so, first order of business are the minutes from last month's meeting and since I wasn't here, I don't have any comments other than a small typo. So, any thoughts, questions, comments on the minutes? Can I get a motion to accept the July 24th minutes?
So moved.
Alright, the second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Kevin, I appreciate that. So Dave G made the motion and seconded by Kevin, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, it's one, two, three, four, six of us, okay, six zero. Carol Canley Planning Updates.
We do hear. Really nothing major since last month. Plan update, everything is moving forward, state's had a final version, so we're doing good with that, I think. The transportation master plan and what they're showing our, our planning commission is relatively going to be incomplete. And, so, we're just moving forward. Right now, we're in transition, looking, looking, but we have a interim director, our, our director went to Howard County two months ago. Sorry, now we have a, we have an acting director who was also the director for the land and resource management, Chris Heine. So, we're sort of, right now, we're that, that aspect. But, everything is, everybody's staying quite busy. Randolph's getting more into, more into the weeds and probably I'll talk with Mary coming up next month, maybe my last month, and I'll hand it off to Randolph, so. I don't have anything else, do you have anything?
Uh, no. Economic development, Land Study, that's on its way too. We're working with the consultants now and next step would be having the planning commission committee and then the board of county commissioners would have a look at it as well.
Good. I have a small assignment. I realize that we haven't done this in a while. And it may be good, but maybe next month you could take a couple of minutes and just tell us who the players are in Carol Canley Plan.
Okay.
Maybe, I don't know, might be able to have like a handout of who the players are and tell us a little bit.
Yeah, we have, we've grown and shrunk and then grown and then shrunk again. But yes, we can get something.
As it stands right now.
Yeah, as it stands right now, it's sort of, you know, who does what and, yeah, I'm sure we can get something together.
Okay, good. I don't, I don't want you to do anything elaborate, but just, I'm not sure if everybody really appreciates. Who's up there? And also how this fits in, how the plan, how the Carol Canley Plan is fitting in relations with the commission. It's got to be some connection or something. Okay, great, thanks. So. Did anybody find this next study of reading a little bit more enjoyable than what we had for the?
Yes.
When I, I, the previous meeting that I missed, I ended up picking up my plan and happened to be the one that, it was prior to this that didn't have the amendments, so this is what I read. And I came in ready to go. She was still sliding along through. Oh, Emily Ann.
She's ill. Did you not see her email?
No, I did not see.
She sent an email midday, I think. Apologizing for the late notice. She has been feeling unwell for a few days and was not sufficiently recovered because she didn't want to give it to us, for which we are grateful. And she said she would watch it, so if you're watching.
Yes, I hope you get better, Emily Ann, and it's a nice having paid sick leave. Good. So, I hope you get well and see you next month or on the streets. Not necessarily on the streets, but outside sometimes.
More than in the gutter, I suppose.
But now you're back to the New Orleans days, so let's get away from that, okay. Alrighty, so. One thirty-three, historical and cultural resources. Kind of fun reading it, I don't know thoughts others have about adding, subtracting, having this even in here, but it's pleasant to read. So, any, any thoughts?
I thought it was interesting, there could be some minor tweaks. I mean, something I noticed pretty quickly was something that they were talking about, yeah. One major boost to the local efforts as a designation, so.
Yeah, we can go through page by page.
I thought it was wonderful. I didn't know half the stuff or not, or probably even two-thirds of it.
And that's part of what I, as we get into this, what I think would be good to talk about, because it, in this section, it does talk about getting community involvement. This is boring stuff, we've been slogging along for a year and a half. And, uh, this is, this is kind of one of the fun parts, reading through this, but maybe it would be of some benefit that we periodically take a section or two and just kind of go through it together during the next five, six-year period, so that it's not something that all of a sudden we do at one time. And also, and maybe we could put this out as a notice so that maybe some others in the community could come, because this is really a comprehensive plan for the town. And we're not getting really much input from the town. And, um, I did have somebody stop me at, was it National Night Out? They chatted a little bit about it, said they saw this on TV and thanked us for spending the time of doing this. But, um, it was a fun read and if you're not part of the Heritage Committee, you wouldn't necessarily know everything that's in here. There's also a really good book that was written a couple of years ago by Frank Badavich that also got an Emmy for, what he put, he put together a video also that goes with it, that does, goes into more detail. But, um.
As an out-of-towner, I highly recommend that book.
Yes.
It's fabulous.
It really is.
It really is.
Something about time, I really feel terrible, I just saw him again this weekend and I don't remember the name. But it, it's really well done, have you ever read it?
Crossroads of Time, or Times Crossroads, something like that.
Yeah, but it, it's very much like a Ken Burns kind of video that he did, where he'd take the old stills and it'll come in and out. But he, Frank used to work for MPT, so he, the production side, so he has a little bit of experience doing this. No, it's on.
Oh, is it, is he Frank Junior? Okay. Let's see, production credits and I'll see, okay.
That's Frankie, yeah. Yeah. Kept him in the family. So, um. This is, I felt like this might have been one of those chapters we talked about very early on about things that were in here, maybe we don't necessarily need, I was curious if anybody else felt that way, it's fun to read, but. You know, there's this really long, tiny printed section on historical preservation resources. I don't, you know. I remember Barb really loved this stuff and she could just go off on this and just quote it off the top of her head. It didn't, doesn't mean a whole lot to me any longer, so I don't know if that's something we would want to keep in there or not. I'm pretty sure that the, Calhoun College is no longer owned by the Brethren Center.
Yeah.
What is the official name for that, for Emily, Springdale Preparatory School?
Academy?
Academy?
I think, yeah. Yeah, that, I notice that needs to be updated.
On one thirty-four, Emily Ann, the third full paragraph on there ends with the site currently houses the New Windsor Brethren Service Center and it's Springdale Preparatory Academy?
I think so, we can finalize that.
Google that. Any thoughts on one thirty-three, any changes, additions, subtractions? Okay.
Well, I'll say on one thirty-four, it's, it's said more or less that there was, there was a period of no growth after World War II, but really about a third of the town was added in the fifties and sixties. It says virtually untouched by growth from World War II until the end of the twentieth century. Lampard's Edition, all of Hillside, Lampard Avenue, they built out most of College Avenue, there was only a couple homes. I don't know whether that's.
You know, if, if we're going to keep this in here, it, that, okay, that's good, like, when was, uh, Atlee Ridge, was that put in in like the sixties or seventies?
No, Atlee Ridge was in like seventy-eight, seventy-seven.
Late seventies, early eighties.
Yes.
Before that though, right?
No. They were.
After, okay.
It's after Atlee, yeah.
Much, yeah. I believe it just came in in the nineties or the late eighties.
Do you want to give it a shot of doing a sentence or two and send it to Emily Ann?
Oh, I can't, yeah, I mean, I can't, yeah. It just kind of more or less said like the town, but it did have a spurt of growth, you know.
Well, we're having a spurt now.
Families and.
You put four houses, it's a spurt.
Yeah, well, it was all of Lampard Avenue and Hillside. It was called Lampard's Edition, I don't know whether that was when Russ Lampert was mayor or on the town council.
Oh.
The reason, no, because my parents' home and on their, their documents, it said Lampard's Edition, so. That's the only reason I know that.
Mayoral legacies, okay. Virtually untouched until the end of the twentieth century, so you.
That's not right.
Discounting that, okay.
So you could say slow growth or limited growth or something like that.
Small post-war.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah. Everybody came home and had to go somewhere.
We have, what, about five hundred residences in town, if you go and throw the development in up there. So, okay, what? If you could give Emily Ann a sentence or two to add in there.
Say something like moderate growth or something, because.
Yeah, moderate growth.
Maybe that's just me being.
No, I think, well, untouched by growth implies two houses in fifty years. And that's not accurate, so those of you who know what's accurate should chime in.
And.
Has anything been added to the, that inventory of the?
Who, who would keep that? Don't know.
Committee, anybody?
I asked Kim and she said she, you know, not aware, I mean, she recognized.
Says the National Register, are these properties all on the National Register? It could be. Included is the National Register History District and then the inventories with, because these numbers have to come from somewhere, CARR. The C-A-R-R is for CARR.
Yeah, that's the CARR number which comes from the Maryland Historical Trust.
Okay.
So that's sort of. They don't, if you looked at it, it's, the Maryland Historical Trust almost covers everything.
Yeah.
Whether it had any historical accuracy is incorrect to say, but if it had, they'd come out and look at everything and they sort of do a survey of what was, what the individual structures significance they may or may not have, and then you may see if there's recommendations. And MHT has a whole website you can go to, which has an interactive map, you can go down to, you know, street level and if there's a dot or whatever, maybe it's a dot or star or something. Click on it and then if there is a survey that was done, you can read about it and sort of visit it that. What the house was built, what significance of the building was and if there was additions, if there were contributing factor additions and all that aspect, or when it comes to the CARR, the C-A-R R number, that's indirect, that is for Carol County. So that I'm sure you would get Baltimore County, maybe V A L T, so East County has their own.
So, to go online and look at this, you go to MHT.org?
The very first item, site that's listed, three eleven High Street, it says Old Main, is that, are they talking about?
I think this is two columns. I was doing the same thing you're doing.
Okay, oh.
But I think it's two columns.
ID number.
They all have a number, yeah.
Okay.
And are all of these still standing since twelve years ago or whenever we did this the last time?
That's what I was, you know, whether.
I, I, I'm not familiar enough with some of these. Like Avalon, I never heard of, it's a car.
Really?
And a song.
Avalon, that's a very famous building.
Yeah.
That's the, the Sling, Sling lift.
Yeah.
That's in, yeah, that's, it's, they aren't right in town.
Oh, okay, they're in the, in the region.
Sunny Brook Farm.
Twelve, it was built, yeah. Bixler House, three oh two High Street.
Live in Sunny Brook Farm?
Or she lived in Windsor Castle? Is that where Snoopy's from? Yeah.
No, not.
Windsor Castle, where, where is Windsor Castle?
Goes back. Oh, now I have to, don't tell anybody.
Yeah, he's something.
It's something like that, it might be Sunny Brook.
It's sunny or something.
Do I, have any volunteers to maybe go out to M H, MHT.org to take a look at these and see if?
Daisy Hill Puppy Farm.
M H D isn't David or G is?
Yep.
What did we do when we had to actually know things? I think you're right about that.
There is, in our plan, map fourteen, I don't know what the new number is going to be.
Yeah, all these things are somewhere.
Map fourteen is where they have them marked. And for you, Emily Ann, on one thirty-five at the top, Jeff, before the chart, it would be good, the cultural resource map, whatever that number is, it would be good to add.
Pay my bills. But a lot of these are right in town.
Oh, there's Windsor Castle.
MHT.Maryland.gov.
Oh, there you go, MHT.Maryland.gov. Dot gov.
Way that far away.
Is it M D or Maryland spelled out?
Maryland spelled out.
Spelled out or just M D?
Yeah.
Windsor Castle.
Volunteer coming from that side of the room? Oh, you're going to look it up?
Yeah, I'll take a look at it.
Okay, okay. Yes.
We're later to, um, call the historical cyclones initiative from MHT, so that's something that I can see as well.
Awesome.
Do the map again.
Okay.
So, if you don't have anywhere else, you do that.
Sure. I, I thought Abigail did this. Yeah, she did, but that was a year ago, sure. Michelle, you know where Ed Pauls Grove is?
Now or in the before time?
Where he lives, up there at the hill.
There.
In the reserve.
Yeah, in the reserves. I never, I've known it by so many names, I, I never remember it's currently, yeah.
You look out his window, there's a lane that goes down, the bottom of the hill, goes across the tracks, that's where Avalon is.
There's a farm and stuff back there and somebody who does sheep.
Uh, no, it's. But it's not, that's not the sheep, that's, that's, but yes, you're in that area, yes. There's not a whole lot of housing there.
No.
But it's a big old house and the kitchen's not attached to the house to this day.
Good old days.
It's still like that.
Women either died from having children or having dinner.
Yes.
Because they burned themselves up. No, seriously, burns was one of the very leading causes of fire because they wore those stupid clothes.
Yes. But it is, it's a cool place. Okay. Thank you, Anna, appreciate it. Did anything jump out to you, historical drill, of something maybe missing one there since you have all the years of?
Uh, well, you were saying about these, these resources, I don't know whether that, like you were saying, whether that needs to be. I know it mentions about, uh, I guess, grants and, you know, if people want to maintain their historical integrity, integrity of their property. It's mentioned about like a tax, but I don't know whether that would be, would need to stay in this or?
I remember about fifteen years ago having conversations with Dave Hoffman about these when I first got here to town. And I, I, I'm, I'm not current on whether they're still active, what you can get from the state.
That would be the concern, and some of these are fairly specific, taxes equal to twenty percent of capital costs for rehabilitation. You know, we don't know if that's accurate or not and do we want to spend our very limited resources trying to ascertain that?
I vote no.
I second your no. Can I do that?
Yeah, I, I, I think that we're going to create more trouble for ourselves. But, not wanting to leave that hanging, it might, let's see. Let me poke around out there on the Maryland website and see on Historical Trust and see what I can, what, you know, what I might be able to find out there that could guys, because I know there was, there have been times when I went out there, I would see all these different resources you could look at and I, and I mean, I'll take a shot at coming up with some words for that. But, um, I think we kind of have consensus though to get rid of that historic preservation resources chart that's in here with, in the fine print. It's like an eight font, might even be six. And paragraph or section three, description of historic preservation resources. That, that first paragraph will somewhat stay, but I'll, I'll see if I can come up with a sentence or two as a point to a website where you could give more information.
Many opportunities can be determined by looking at X.
Yep. Well, this is the perfect thing to volunteer Dave for since she's not here. Heritage tourism. This talks about, um, something that was, that actually did happen, that, that, the discussion about the heart of the Civil War heritage areas. That, that they actually did that, it was not as extensive as it originally thought when they were having initial plans, but they, there are some placards that are around. So I think some of the, the tense changing is that it's, it was a designation, not is going to be. Talks in here about target investment zones, does that kind of thing still exist? I mean, that was a big thing when we were doing this fifteen years ago, I remember hearing of it. And it says that he talks about there are substantial funds for these targeted investments zones, but I never saw anything or any heard anything that came from that. There, there was that push for the, the Civil War heritage area and there were the placards that went around, there was a couple of bronzes around. I don't think we got one here. I'm not aware of any in New Windsor, but. I mean, it's a nice little historical thing about the five thousand, uh, Union soldiers going through and then the Confederates, but wasn't anything.
Would that be something that we would want to maintain for future, you know, like future funding? We could go say, you know, this is in our master plan as far as?
Yeah, I, I think we would probably want to leave this in here, I think pulling out the discussion about these target investment zones, that, that paragraph I think might make sense if we just pull that out of there. So, we're on one thirty-eight and it's right there in the middle of the page.
So we think.
We're not even named as one of them.
No.
Right, right.
And you don't, you guys don't think that's something that the county still has and?
You mean the targeted investment zones? To my knowledge, no. Everything, all the planning people are on it, you know, maybe that's something I would not have heard of. You know, a bunch of hard Civil War heritage area, the trail, that, we do actually have work funded for, a plan already, we, we gaze on to that. I know there are grants and things up there that they provide, I don't, I don't think they're far.
Right. Yeah, but, but I know, and I think it's over Union Bridge, there's one of those bronzes that, that was put together, it wasn't even a bronze, it was more of a multicolored, something that's laminated that's sitting there like a, like a plaque.
Yeah. We have up here in the corner.
Yeah. But that's not a Civil War run up there in the corner.
I think so.
I, I can't address that.
Early town.
Okay, I thought it was.
Gosh, we should know this, shouldn't we?
I've looked at it numerous times, but.
Yeah.
It is also conceivable with respect to the planning department that economic development may in the back of a drawer somewhere still have listings for targeted investment zones. Now, the only person, God rest him, that I knew well over there is no longer with us. But, you know, it might be worth a phone call just to say, hey, you guys still do anything with this? They won't want to admit that they don't, though that's the downside.
You can make that, okay.
I'm not trying to make work for you, I just, you know, and before we take it out and then learn that we could have gotten a million dollars if we hadn't taken it out.
Yeah.
Now, I'm, I'm going to toss in, do you guys know anything about this journey through hallowed ground? I know that a very significant segment of Route fifteen is, is now officially named like Route Journey Through Hallowed Ground, because I thought I was in the wrong place when I found myself on it. So, somebody was doing something with it since the fall of two thousand and six. So I just, I, before we, we take things out, that, um, I don't know if anything ever came of that or not, other than renaming fifteen so that I feel like I'm lost.
I haven't, I've not heard of that, we could, we could see if it's still.
Mm-hmm, if it's still a thing.
Where did you see that, on fifteen?
I was on fifteen and I was coming back from Frederick and I got started the wrong way. So I'm like, well, you know, how lost can you get? It was a sunny day, had a fairly new car, I'm just driving along, tooling along, figuring I'll find, it's west, it's a big city, I'll find it. So I'm tooling along and I'm thinking I'm on fifteen. I was on fifteen, but the sign said that I was on like Journey Through Hallowed Ground Highway. And I'm not, I'm not really good with the whole GPS besides which I'm driving. And so finally I'm driving along, I'm like, I'm sorry, I've been here before and I know this is fifteen, so I just followed it and sure enough, I was right and I got home. But so it was somewhere on that stretch near Cunningham Falls Park.
Okay, that would make sense, I was going to ask you if you're up near Thurmond.
Wound up, because I'm familiar with that area, wound up coming through Cunningham Falls going, ah, I'm good, now I know where I am. Only I'm in hallowed ground, I, I, I felt very humbled.
Sounds like Thurmond, it sounds like it's in Thurmond.
It's up in that. It, it's up in that part of the world, yeah. It was definitely on fifteen in that area. Maybe they just named it for political purposes, so Camp David could be on the hallowed ground route or something, I don't know.
Could be some truth to that. Federal funds.
Yeah, they gotta go somewhere.
Federal funds.
So I apologize, I can't tell you exactly where, but I know that's generally where I saw it.
Field trip time. Cozy, oh, Cozy's gone, I guess I'm gonna go to man.
Oh, yeah, unfortunately.
I'm familiar with a, with a small watering hole in Thurmond that I can strongly advise against, but we'll do that when we're not on camera.
I lived there for several years, so. These have the best crab cake subs. No, 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 there's a hole in the wall. Crab cake sub. You ever had a crab cake?
I can't say that I have.
It's really good, market basket. Yeah, okay, well. On one thirty-eight, the very first full paragraph, I was just going to suggest that instead of is going to be the recent designation, it was the designation Maryland's Heart of the Civil War area, Heritage Area. And then that next paragraph that talks about the target investment zones, well, next month, get a little update to see if there is, if that does exist, then we can maybe do something with that.
Shouldn't we say is designated a Maryland Heart of the Civil War, not was, is, because it's, so we still are. We still are.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Because I, I would think if you say was, it sounds like we lost it.
Yeah, I got, yeah, I'll buy that, yep. I just wanted to get out that recent part, because it's.
That's what I, that's the only thing, when I was reading through the whole thing, that's the only thing I thought would need to go.
Yeah, I can't read, I can't, can't read them.
And I had a question about the journey through hallowed ground. I remember that, but you have actually.
In fact, it's on a map. It must be real if it's on a map. You closed it now.
National Park Service. But then it's, it's each location. I just Googled that and it's. Comes up from Point Rocks, and essentially follows Route fifteen.
Oh, so that's, but. To a point of rocks, that's the other part of the county though, because I'm seeing Cattockton Mountain Highway running through Thurmond.
Okay, well, some of it goes there towards Smithburg and then.
It's not fifteen then.
Yeah, it, it's like. Two different routes.
Think it really comes to here then.
It doesn't come all this far, at least not what I saw.
Now I'm intrigued, I'm gonna go riding around. Oh, cool, it's a field trip.
Because it says in two thousand and six may designate portions, well, maybe it may not designate portions as well of Carroll County.
Hell, it's a big area.
I know Frederick Roy capitalizes on, because they have the Civil War Medicine Mu- uh, Medicine Museum and.
Terrifying.
Yeah, and, and I, and I guess they're thinking that the routes to the different cores traveled in, in route to Gettysburg or Hanover.
Oh, it's nothing like.
Anything I could.
Yep, I'm not seeing it.
On that map, it, it kind of goes on each side of the, the ridge.
Yeah, you said down towards Point of Rocks?
Yeah, a couple, more or less follows Route fifteen to Frederick.
All the way up to Emmitsburg.
Yeah. Part of it splits off.
Not us, though.
And I kind of think that's how we got the, the markers, we, you know.
Around that time. I know it was after this was done.
But if we're not included in or near it, do we want to include it or reference to it in this plan?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what that really has to do with.
It has nothing to do with us. Well, how do you get added to the list? Because they only have Tony Town, Westminster, Sykesville. Oh, that's the certificate.
Well, that's back to the targeted zones. Well, they probably got Sykesville because of Springfield. Downtown Sykesville not being a hub of industrial or targeted investment. But the, the Warfield complex sure is.
I miss having Donna, because she was a good historian for things in the town.
Alvin? Oh, yeah, man.
And it talks in here, and I, I, now that, that I'm reading this again with this discussion, I, I think I remember this issue of the Heart of the Civil War Heritage Area, because in, in, and the council did do some kind of a vote.
Definitely, I remember that.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, we, we want to be part of that, but, you know, I'm not sure. To incorporate those portions of the area management plan. I don't know where to go find that management plan. I'm gonna text her and see if she might know anything. I'll check with Donna.
Research that Maryland Heritage Areas Authority, whether that's still in them.
Also, I think the current mayor may likely remember something about that too, because I think he was on the council.
Our mayor?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, he remembers everything about everything.
Yep. Okay, I'll check with him to see if there's anything that he can shed on this. Because if there was an opportunity to get money from the state or the feds, he would have been on that. So he'll probably be able to tell us the story, what, what happened. Okay. But I, I agree, and I had a question mark about keeping that last paragraph if we're not part of that journey through hell with ground, I'll wait till, you see what I can learn from the governor, excuse me, the mayor. It's my mistake. Okay. So analysis of community needs. This is where they start talking about design guidelines and a pattern book.
We didn't adopt design guidelines.
Yeah, but a pattern book.
Pattern book always makes me feel like I'm seven shopping in a clothing, a fabric store with my grandmother.
Ladies with the clothing.
Drawings that you cut out.
Simplicity, yes, that, yeah, that was.
Butterick, McCalls. We sewed a lot when I was a kid.
Are town officials interested in developing a pattern book?
I don't think, I think we floated that when we did the design guidelines, and everybody said, well, you know, it's four blocks, look around.
Okay, yeah, should, put that in here, it's for this.
But you could say that the town has developed design guidelines as part of its, you know, the land use approval requirements, something like that, because we do have them, they're in there.
I think when Ward, like the, Tom Ward's conceptual plan for Snyder Summit, didn't they say about adding the gingerbread to some?
Oh, yeah.
Evidently, they, they.
Well, that was like volume three of thirty-six of the, of the plans for that project.
But they did walk around and look at the four blocks.
Look at it, and then they talked to their money people, and their money people said, what?
Yeah, well, why do you want to do that?
Six thousand dollars more per home. But they, they did do, I'm not meaning to castigate them in any way. They did what they could within their financial feasibility, because fancy, schmancy gingerbread houses that no one buys are not helpful for the town. They're selling them up there.
And, and what legal grounds would the town have to say? Well, you've got a, other than if we would develop a pattern book?
Well, you'd have, there's a lot of things you'd, you'd almost have to do. And we, I mean, we talked about it, and they were very responsive to the commission on all of the iterations of their plan for up there, because they had several over the years.
They came with like poster boards of all the different things, and showed all the different layouts.
Saw any of them. I mean, they, they showed us the, the drawing, they, the very first ones that I saw looked really, really nice. I mean, we're all kind of drooling over, but that's not how it evolved. You know better than any of us, we know about the cost, yeah. I, I'm fine with that section, but that last paragraph. I think the community does, you know, does desires to retain a small town feel by monitoring development design. And I, I'd like where Michelle was going, that the town has developed guidelines as part of, and then I, I can't write as fast as you were speaking.
I would say a guide, the rest of it is a guide for town officials, policymakers, and developers.
The town has developed guidelines, okay.
It's not a pattern book.
Yeah, that comes out. And I, I heard you say something, as part of the land use.
You know, I never remember what I say. But I think you're close. We've developed design guidelines to serve as a guide for town officials, policymakers, and developers as, you know, land use decisions are made. How does that sound?
Consistent with the feel and character of the community. Is that clear enough, is mud for you, Emily Ann? Hopefully, you could hear what we said, you can put that into a sentence or two for us. But it's the first three paragraphs on one thirty-nine stay. First sentence of the fourth paragraph, and then it's tweaking that, that last section. Essentially getting the idea of a pattern book out of there. And you feel like these guidelines have been written somewhere, or it's just?
They're in subdivision regulations section.
So you think that's guidelines that way?
They're called, design guidelines.
Design guidelines, yes. Okay, 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 I keep hearing signs, so, okay, I'm fine.
Ever hear signs, because that's coming up next.
Signs or banners?
In more ways than one, that's coming up next.
Signs or banners? I'm, I'm always confused between those. All right.
Everything must be neon, it's our new rule.
Do we need to limit the colors of the neon?
No, all neon, all colors of, of neon. The bigger, the better.
Westminster?
We're busy, we're busy being kind in Westminster, so we have no time for anything else.
One forty, recommended actions. Pretty sure the Heritage Committee has gotten a museum, since I just borrowed some chairs from there on Saturday. And I think it was two thousand and nine.
It's been there a while.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta double check the date on that, but the end of the first paragraph, it says, it was a cooperative effort with New Windsor Bank, State Bank. That they were able to achieve the long-term goal of a of a museum, collect their various resources, and if you haven't been into the museum, have you been in there, Ryan? You been in, Kevin?
Oh, you should go.
Oh, sure you are.
Several times. I would strongly encourage you to go in there on it, because Saturdays is only when it's open. There's only a handful volunteers that will do it. Doris Ann, that was, yeah, it was Doris Ann. She was always in there. Claire is often too often there. But it really is a, it's got some really interesting stuff, and will bring back memories for the, the boys, and I gotta say that. Because I don't recall the girls having wool uniforms in the summer like we had when we played Little League. Wool, oh, yeah, they got wool baseball uniform there. Art Seibel will tell you about them, but yeah, that's really cool.
Well, there wasn't anything else. There was wool and cotton.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Cotton ripped easier when you slid.
Hey, but it's heavy wool.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but it's got some really interesting, or then, and the best thing I think up there is the It's about this tall, and it's got all the different tolls. It's really worth visiting. The house tour, but that is, because it takes time getting volunteers and a lot of work. That has been going by the wayside. Have not really done that in several years. I'll, I'll give a shot for that paragraph on here, because I tried to hook up with a couple people this weekend, but they were.
People.
Yeah, oh, there was a goofy yard sale up there, and people didn't show, so I didn't get what I needed, but strongly recommend going to the museum. Doesn't cost anything to walk in, and you could pick up a copy of Frank's book.
I think they've showed the video.
Yes.
They showed that video.
They don't, you just ask whoever's at the desk, they'll gladly do it for you.
I haven't seen that many of them, I have a book.
It's a perfect place to get holiday gifts.
The sulfur springs, they've, have they finished the archaeological dig there? Because aren't, didn't they apply for some grant money to?
I don't know if that's really the term, I just think that, you know, you, you know what it's like when you retire, you know, you don't quite have the, the same interest in time, and I don't think, I, I, I don't think that they have stopped doing that, but there's just not as much movement with doing the dig.
They used to do that in conjunction with the school. Yeah, so no school, no conjunction.
Yes, since Lisa's not really doing it.
Well, maybe they'll get some other bright star who'll come in and want to revitalize it, you know.
All of this section is talking about having champions, and, you know, we're, we're looking for the next group of people that are willing to come in and start putting some time in doing it.
Getting harder and harder to get people to do things.
I mean, we've lost Bryce Workman, we've lost Doris, you know, she's moved away. It's just, it's really getting more difficult to have people to take up that interest in doing it. The brain trust just kind of moves along. Neil fits into that, he's part of the brain trust, maybe he'll take over and inherit it. Retirement days.
Don't tell Sina.
Yeah, I understand. I noticed, I just said his name.
I did, I did notice that.
Maybe Sina, we can strike that from the record. So that's a suggestion. So, item two, to review and revise the new Windsor sign code. I seem to recall having discussions about the new Windsor sign code. I don't see banners mentioned anywhere in here.
There are no banners, there are no banners, and there are no alleys.
And there are no alleys.
It's a rule. But on a, on a more serious tone, this makes no sense to me at all to have what is effectively trying to be a sign ordinance in your plan. It is certainly true, and gird your loins, boys and girls, because we do have to really review the sign ordinance, because it is, in the technical Latin parlance, a mess. It's not a mess, it's just got some internal contradictions, it hasn't been looked at in quite a while. But this, colors should be, signs should conform, freestanding signs should stand free. I, I, what is it doing here?
Roof signs are highly discouraged.
What are highly discouraged?
Roof signs.
Highly discouraged. Who thought that wouldn't pass? My, I have no vote. If I were to have a vote, I would take that whole two out. Or just say the, you know, sign codes need to be periodically reviewed to remain current and appropriate for modern usage, something like that.
In a historic district.
In a historic district, or outside of one for that matter.
I only had one comment on this section, was, is it specific enough? It was tongue in cheek, because I just, I, I agree with you all heartedly, I'd.
I never even caught roof signs are highly discouraged. I never even caught roof signs are highly discouraged. Basement signs are the pits.
So.
Do what you will, that's my thought.
Isn't this covered by the code of the town?
It is, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
Because this has, this doesn't have, um.
Yeah, that, that.
Any kind of teeth behind it.
Yeah.
No, it doesn't belong here. I mean, we may want to, you know, carry this with when it comes time to review the actual and and update the actual sign code, and throw away the highly vaunted done by Carroll County planning matrix, which is impossible for anybody who isn't a Carroll County, Carroll County planner to figure out. It was way before your time, Chris. But no, it doesn't belong in here.
Yeah, that. I'm a little confused as to why this is in here, but anyway.
And window signs are encouraged as long as they don't clutter the building with two onings.
Two onings, no, not three, four onings are right up.
Can you move it?
Any other comments, thoughts on this?
I have two thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, it's, to me, it's out of place.
Good. How about the first paragraph, though? And I I I think that we, under recommended actions, we should review and revise the new Windsor sign code. To ensure signs improve the aesthetics of the town, as well as complement, and and the first paragraph, I don't think hurts anybody. I felt like the first sentence of the next paragraph could stay in there, just add it to the first paragraph. Rest of it talks about the design guidelines are as follows, I think, we just strike that for now. Objections? Then done.
Aren't you inviting possibility of a conflict down the road with the town code on this, though, if you do that? Because somebody could take that, look at it.
Oh, if we kept it in, you mean?
See what I mean?
Yeah.
You you got, somebody could pick up on that and say, well, your code doesn't match, you know, and I'm just trying to do what.
Well, this is a plan, so really, it it, we just say that why, it it, we've removed it, but even if it didn't match up, you could say, well, the plan versus what actually happened are two different, because they happened in two different elements of time.
Yeah, but avoid. Avoid the battle.
Yes, I agree.
I'm a big fan of avoiding the battle.
I agree with Dave.
I wasn't crazy about the last sentence in this section about the courts have generally rejected the argument that sign ordinance is improperly restricted.
Here either, because I'm not, for one thing, I'm not completely convinced that now that's true.
How about that first sentence, do you think that's okay? The courts have upheld attempts by communities prescribed sign control.
Eh, why? You know, I I'm always leery of any statement that says the courts have generally.
Okay.
Because some have and some haven't, and then there's always somebody who comes in with the one that hasn't, or who goes on the dreaded line and brings you four seven, you know, forty-seven examples of cases from Minnesota as to why you're wrong, and it's, leave it out, just leave it out.
Done.
So were we keeping anything from two?
Yes.
The first paragraph?
Paragraph.
And then the first sentence.
And the first sentence, top of one forty-one, I think can just roll right as, at the end, and this is one paragraph. And just be with that, specifically, starting with the following guidelines are recommended, that and everything below that goes. I'm, I am not in any way knowledgeable about the tax credit. Mentioned the number three.
Same thing, I don't know whether they're accurate numbers at all.
And I don't know what a contributing building is.
I know this was a big deal.
Was a big deal.
Because in the late nineties is when they went through, when they, you know, got the the whatever the little placards on, what about thirty properties in town? And that was great, but it's not, they're not on the list of the the federal national register, it's just a.
And it's all written in the present tense, and we don't know if it's still accurate.
Yeah.
I was gonna say you could add things like maybe available, but you couldn't put any percentages in there, and then to me, it's why are we doing it?
So those tax credits, you don't know whether they're even.
If they exist.
Yes.
And there's so many of those things come and go, you know, there's a one-year grant, and everybody who applies can redo their front porch, and then it goes away.
And they're really restrictive, too, as to what you want to try to do, because I tried to do it with the windows, and it costs so much money to be consistent with what they said you could do, that it was really prohibitive to go, okay, great, I get a twenty percent tax credit, but I ended up spending four times as much as I would if I had gone the direction I wanted to go, so.
See section five, upcoming.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We're we're getting there. I say we just scratch three. This, 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 that gets scratched, so now number four can become three. The town can begin efforts to recruit targeted businesses.
You don't want to target out here.
We don't have a chamber of commerce.
We don't have like a sofa of commerce, much less a whole chamber.
Right, much less a whole chamber. We, the.
I'll let me come to these meetings anymore.
Will you shut her up? It's not, I don't know why Neil has this.
He does throw that sometimes, I'm.
Or, or business development councilwoman, you know, it's it's, this, you know, goes out and chats with the businesses, and it involves someone in Westminster, but it's, unless we got something like a chamber. A group of local businessmen together, working with the council, working with the planning commission, that are developing a plan for development of the downtown area. You know, I think there's been an awful lot of hope that something's going to happen over here with the Deoman. Still think, you know, what the town did, what that was a step that was taken, and that would be potentially the beginning of the revitalization, if that's the term, but um. I guess leaving something in here would leave it open, since this is supposed to be the town's comprehensive plan, but I'm not sure how we want to word this, and would like some thoughts on that, because we're not, unlike a lot of other small towns, not only in the county, but in the country, state, that even the main streets aren't what they used to be. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure how you you get that started. It's usually somebody against the champion that wants to go and take that on, so I don't know, I don't know how to build on that, I don't think we want to restrict. But I I feel like, you know, just consider developing a municipal main street effort. That sounds to me like, you know, who who's going to develop this effort? Who who's going to put this together? I don't think that's our place to sit there and say, we're gonna do it. And this National Main Street Centers four-part program, that's not what we're talking about with this, whatever the state thing is, okay, that's not the main street project.
Nothing related to.
Yeah, it's nothing related to that, okay, it just happens to be similar words, okay? Are you in any way familiar with the the National Main Street Centers four-part program?
I don't, I'll stop ahead, I don't know. About the four-part program, but yeah, the National Main Street Center is probably like the lead organization of of helping main streets revitalize. Where I'm, where I grew up in North Carolina, they have revitalized their downtown greatly. Last big thing, which is a hotel that was built in eighteen hundreds, is now getting ready to be revitalized in multiple different different scenarios, but that down in a lot of places, main street program are are fairly big. It's, I know Westminster has, has one in the demo itself, but it's, it does take a lot of energy. Money, but energy may fall and you'll see what, how you'll make streets to grow.
But thinking of that example of, you you say your town that you're from, that would have been, there had to have been some kind of a, a combination of public-private partnership, and some, somewhere there's a driving force behind that.
Oh, yeah, it is, I mean, it's, I mean, it's been seventy years, seventy years, I think, it's taken ever to finally get to where it is, and here it is a public-private partnership that I think at one point in time, the city finally bought the building, and later developers are, it's already getting plans from developers to see what can be done. Finally, they came together, that.
Great job.
That's well.
And one here, and one here, I had, I don't know how, even if you had a driving force, how you do that in this town? When you tear the church down and put up a tower?
Horrible, the intersection, everything.
You know, you're talking about revitalizing the main street, you don't have a.
Not that you would know the answer to this, but.
Business.
This is.
Seventy years ago.
The Deoman is the obvious thing for this town.
Even though they're just looking at it.
I hear from people all the time, that used to be the old harvest store, that used to be the old grocery store, the old pharmacy and all that. Somebody needs to be the champion of that to say, okay, you know, we want to get business together, we want to, let's talk to the town, what can the town put into this? Some seed money, go to the county, you know, you get a coalition of of the pri- of the public as well as private, and I I I think our role is to create something that kind of gives a structure that can support that, but not guide.
Yeah, I think that, that's probably good, good assumption, that you can get options, the biggest thing is, you only have design guidelines that especially come to the heart of the downtown area. And there's a lot of small things that probably could be done. I know a very, something large, we just call it, it's right from North Carolina, is they go, they call them ghost signs, it's the old advertising signs painted on a side of buildings. That now, they are.
Mail pouch tobacco.
One on twenty, oh, twenty, oh, they lost one on twenty, uh.
Twenty seven, yeah.
I mean, you know, obviously Coca-Cola, it's almost every single building has it, but there's also a lot of local RMCs and things, and really the one I really like is the royalty company that's still around, and their telephone number is the last two digits, so I was like, so you had to do those, and clicking, which now, that is still their same number, of course, now you have, but it's kind of neat how you see how things evolve. Now we have the ten-digit code, the ten-digit number, where it used to be seven digits, and at one point in time, it was only four digits.
Let me say Grover Ford.
Wasn't there a discussion up here on the park that there's going to be a go sign?
Yeah, there, there, I believe it's in process.
Yeah.
Uh, there's an agreement with the the Gertie family, Dr. Gertie, is that building, to put like a mural on the side of that building.
You mean, Uffers?
Huh?
Uffer?
I don't know.
The, the, that is in there.
Huh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the family that owns that. Yeah.
Yeah, that's where Dr. Gertie was, I'm sorry. You you you've been there long enough, okay.
Went there many times.
Remember when they lived above us?
Okay.
Because the kids used to.
Yeah, because, yeah, that building there.
In conjunction with, I think, the Arts Council and and a couple of other things to to do it, and I don't know exactly where it is in the process, but it is contemplated and the paperwork has been done.
And the end of the brick building here where Fred Snyder's was boxwood antiques was painted on, their sign was painted on the end of the building. You know, that's something that could be.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
Yeah, since you mentioned it.
Yeah, that was painted.
I was gonna say, the flip side of that is, we made loans, well, I mean, you, yeah, when Lone Star was down there.
We made them remove, they're just on the side of the building.
Yeah.
How do you do that?
Yeah.
Popping up again, they'll say.
Everything old is new again.
That was before he left. He had the sign, then he left, and then he, he's back, but it's just more catering, he doesn't, wish he'd be open, because I'm always down there. So. And and I'm open to suggestions what to do with number four, which is now three.
Maybe instead of con- maybe instead of considering, maybe say encourage develop, you know, like a uh, economic development? Or business association? All there.
I think it goes back to what Mark said, though, like, instead of the town may do this, somebody has to develop what we can actually do, and then offer that to somebody instead of just assuming all this stuff's available. Because are we trying to fulfill residential density goals? I mean, do we have residential density goals?
Pretty much have reached that.
There's like four houses left, and then we will have reached our goal.
To grow, we also have in here, too.
Yeah, I mean.
And I haven't heard of any rumors of any commerce being attracted.
Down the door to come here. Because they're not going to.
Possible new development, but that's still.
And that's what you are.
Have to agree with you.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, would still be a decade away, but, you know, they haven't even taken the first step of getting something.
There's nothing official, so, yeah.
Like a Barbie lamp.
You have a place for this, to be honest. I mean.
Provide encouragement for any, you know, private. private individual businesses to, uh, you know, um, form. Cause that's what you need, you need to have, you're exactly right, you need to have a, a business, a Main Street committee, but you don't even have a Main Street. And, and, I mean, it's, it's just, like, the physical layout of this town doesn't have, I was, I was telling Glenn, I was in Sykesville last Friday, I never go to Sykesville, cause, I mean, I have to get in the car and go.
All the way to
Downtown, so, it's amazing what all is down there, but it's all in a two-and-a-half block radius, right there, one street, parking, parking, shops.
Very walkable.
And very walkable, and you don't have, you don't have that, so you talk about revitalizing your Main Street. Well, what are you gonna do? Tear all those houses down and put people out of them and, and put shops in there? Where are you gonna put your shops?
You gotta have someplace to put your vehicle to be able
Is a challenge in New Windsor.
Yeah, yeah. Well, parking garage, maybe that needs to come.
Seven or eight stories, that should do it. Uh-oh, now that's gonna be the rumor all over the place.
Recorded.
For posterity.
So
I mean, you don't wanna, you wanna, you want to encourage business to locate here and be successful and grow if appropriate. But you're, uh, this sort of thing, you know, assessment freezes and abatement of taxes and all that stuff, that requires a whole different setup than you have or are likely to have. It sounds good on paper, but it doesn't work on the street.
Would, would it makes, maybe, I don't know, the, I've thought about this for most of my time in New Windsor, I'm used to there being some kind of an organization like the Chamber that is stirring things up for the business community.
Yeah, Main Street Associations and stuff like that.
Keeping things going, and we, we don't really have that drive, we have individuals, small businesses that do their thing and that's it, they're not really connected, um, they just go their own way, it's that we don't have, yes, we have Music on the Main, but Music on the Main isn't really something that's bringing the businesses here, it's just something for the community, it's just a uh, you know, it's, I don't like the carnival, it's just an event, people can come, bring their stuff and move back. But economic development for the town, maybe, maybe that's what this is more about, maybe having a I, I like that idea, I hadn't heard that term in a while, the Main Street Committee. Uh, I, I, I remember that in my small town of Barbuda, it's, I had a Main Street.
Call it different thing than Main Street Merchants or, or whatever.
But that would mean there'd be some catalyst
Yeah.
To have them together.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, Frankie's, Matty and, and Belice Mo's, okay. I, it is, you know, it's just, that is not a, a mix.
They're, 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 yeah, it's a
Seven-Eleven.
Seven-Eleven, come on, there, there's a backup.
You got, you got a garage. Car repair place.
Union Bridge, they kinda have a, I don't know what that is. That's kind of a what, the Main Street, Union Bridge, I mean, they sponsor what, Fourth of July Celebration, or not
Oh, yeah, what are they called?
The duck race thing?
Yeah, I mean, they do
They've got a name, though.
But that duck thing was, was, again, that was a community thing for like the kids.
That was the businesses in town kinda.
There is a group out there, there's a group out there, what the heck is the name of the group? Rise, Union Bridge or something. But it, I don't know if it's merchants or just miscellaneous folks, but it doesn't have to be businesses per se.
We could, uh, you know, so we can't even have the downtown merchants, I think that's what Westminster used to have.
One of the things
Well, they do a lot of stuff down there.
Yeah.
The, you and I, when we attended that online session on comprehensive planning, just, I guess it was last December, they talked about this periodically, the planning commission meeting with the council to talk about some items, and I feel like this, you know, I, I feel like there can be some exchange between the two, as to how we might want to address some of it, or how we can build this to help address that, because we're not there, there's no catalyst, we, we can put words in here and it's, you know, it's nice words, you know, that you know, with the track record and, you know, what's, but I, I don't really know what any of that means for the four-part, because
Dream Big Union Bridge, that's what they are, it's a, it's a group.
Know whether they're
Dream Big Union Bridge are on Facebook, they must be real.
You know what, the lady that runs that consignment shop, she's a part of that, she's, I think, one of the leaders.
In fact, they came here, like, after the Christmas tree lighting or something, so, they came, maybe it was after Music on the Main. They came to like the next council meeting and, uh, somebody from that group commended the town for not just its event, but its ability to move its event indoors on like an eighteen-minute notice. Um, and I, and I remember them.
Yes.
But they're a private organization.
Okay.
And I don't know really what, what else they do, but I know that's their name.
Backbones of that is somebody, I'm pretty sure it's, it's somebody that's on your town council.
Oh, yeah, probably.
Uh, I can see her, but she has a big part over there in a consignment shop right next to Frank and Jim's, or Watersburg, yeah.
We kinda may suggest and join the council at a work session and, or town meeting or
We don't have our representative here, I floated that before, that after, if you and I did that session in our houses down in Salisbury. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I don't think that got any traction with, with the, uh, the council, but I'm gonna suggest that to him again, because I, I feel like we can help craft something. But I think it needs to be yeah, and then we talked about this, and I know it was discussed at the town council about the vision statement. I feel like without some vision, we're not the visionaries, we're the planners. And I, and I feel like it's a challenge as to how we go, we, we talk about it, it's a small-town field. But, you know, we got stuff in here about, as we continue to grow, we, we, we talk about, we're not growing. You know, where, where are we growing? You know, we, we, we definitely aren't in the process of looking to annex, that's not, that's not in, in any vision that, that I hear or see. But we wanna build something that's not gonna prohibit something that fits in with the tenure of the town, but I don't know, I'm, I'm the, the logjam with what to do about this, if, if anything. Anybody that can help me off my log, bump me off my log, would be great.
I can't get Facebook to look up Union Bridge, so.
You know, when, you know, to support this effort, town may wish to develop some additional benefits such as facade improvement. You know, just throw that against the wall and see if that sticks, you know, I'm not sure where this, what, 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 what that is.
I think about abatement of property taxes, we, we're not doing that.
Oh, I missed that one, where was that?
Well, that's after, an assessment freeze or abatement of town property taxes.
Yeah. Is that in here?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Where did I miss that? Oh, I bet it's coming up.
Thing is, is not just for a much larger jurisdiction.
It's on page one forty-two at the bottom. That last pa- in that paragraph. It's fulfilling our density goals.
Nobody's gonna have to pay taxes.
And then we're gonna do the facade improvement grant program, an assessment freeze, or an abatement of town property taxes.
Stop when I got to that facade improvement, it's like, where are you just Okay, I see, yeah.
Getting even better.
I, I, I feel like if, if we're putting something like that in here, isn't that giving some teeth? That somebody would look at our plan and say, whoa, you, you, do your plan to give abatements?
Well, I, I I don't think anyone could file an action in Mandamus forcing you to do a tax freeze, but if you know you're not gonna do something, why put it in your plan? And you know stuff is completely infeasible, like a four-part, um, workable model for appropriately scaled it's not like, it's not like we have a rush on people who wanna come and, and put stuff in here. You're desperately looking for people to come and put stuff in here, so why, why tell them that they might have an assessment freeze if you know good and well they're not going to? This is just, I'm, I get off on myself.
This language has been in here ten years and nobody
And no one has knocked at the door.
Almost fifteen.
Yeah, more than that, cause we started this in oh-five. So eighteen years ago we started, and it just took
Behind our time. As Bob Cratchit said.
Would, would it instead of developing, consider developing a municipal Main Street effort, maybe more of a, of a, a municipal Main Street committee?
Or how about continue supporting Main Street development and, or, or, yeah, can, continue supporting uh, Main Street growth?
That's making the assumption that there is already support.
Continue at the same level. Support.
Your Main Street is not your, is not Main Street.
That is correct.
So, I think you should at least say, you know, but your central business district or, or, um, economic, you know, um, marketing opportunities, no, there's no Main Street on Main Street.
Yeah.
Maybe there was, you know, way back when the Civil War people came through and stole shoes, but until then, you know, since then, no. If you think about it. All the way down, maybe Frankie's is on Main Street technically.
Yeah. Boy, that's really stretching, cause you gotta go around a corner.
Between Main, that part of Main Street and the Seven-Eleven.
Yep.
That's your business district of Main Street right there. So don't call it Main Street, it's my only point. Call it downtown businesses or
Well, we call it central, don't we call it the CBD, Central Business District? We have something, you know, yeah. But, but instead of an effort, how about a, 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 a committee, since this is more like a pie in the sky that it's talking about. A municipal
Encourage, encourage is always a good word.
Okay. Okay, I like that, instead of consider, as I just considered, I think we'd encourage developing a municipal or village center, or, cause we do use that term, or
But you have businesses that are not in your village center.
Okay.
Commerce.
Yeah, I think commerce is an excellent way to approach it, because your neighborhood business has businesses in it. And your village center doesn't encompass all of your business development.
So encourage developing a municipal commerce.
I'm just encouraged developing commerce throughout town.
Yeah.
I, I was thinking of, of more of a back to that Main Street Committee thing that you mentioned, encouraging and I, I don't know how you begin that, but
Encourage developing a commerce district?
No, I'm thinking more, we, we wanna, we wanna get some people to, we wanna support people that are willing to try to do something. You know, whether it's a coalition between the, the restaurants, or, you know, if we wanna have, uh, well, I'm certainly not gonna shut down thirty-one for some kind of event for the businesses.
Coalition, a coalition of local businesses.
Yeah.
I like coalition, I always think that's a good word.
Encourage developing a municipal commerce coalition.
I like it, write it down quick before we forget.
Okay, yeah, I like coalition too. So, now I think we wanna have some sentences below that, and I'm not sure that there's much in this paragraph that we're gonna keep.
When I first read this, where it says, as the town begins to fulfill its residential density,
Yeah.
I read destiny. To fulfill its residential destiny, and I thought, who the heck wrote that? And then I realized I was wrong.
Destiny, okay.
Is New Windsor part of the National Trust? For historic sites, or is our town is, we're listed something like that, aren't we?
There was something that, that was created, uh, it was an effort, and I think Doris Ann was a big part of it. Where they, yeah, where they, we have these bronzes like you would have if you were on the list of historic register sites. But it's just a New Windsor.
Oh, okay.
So, there are like twenty properties in town, I've got one of them. It sits there and says, you know, eighteen ninety-seven, circa eighteen ninety-seven, and, but it, it doesn't have any teeth to it, cause they the town did look into getting on the National Historic Registry, and I think they're really, uh, the, the, the limitations, once you get on there, what you can do to your property, really, really
Extravagant.
Trust me, I hear that from people in Annapolis all the time, they have the same issues trying to do any kind of
Friend that has a place in Williamsburg. You know, you can only breathe three times a day, cause, you know, you
And that's to the left.
I'm willing to give it a shot at writing something for this, and maybe we could talk about a couple points we might wanna have in here about encourage developing a municipal commerce coalition. And if you're keeping score, Emily Ann, that's number three here. On one forty-two, we're striking, number three altogether, number four is essentially going out and being repurposed as encourage developing a municipal commerce coalition. Now you had me reading that, destiny.
Honestly.
It's residential destiny.
It's the fulfill part that throws you into destiny.
That's funny. Well, since I made a stumble on this, how about if I give this a shot to write a couple sentences for this, and then I'll send it out before the next meeting for us to chew on. So, so this is where we create the pattern book.
So you wanna say create a pattern book to help retain small-town character, just
No, we don't.
No, we don't wanna say that. Five is gone. Cause we've already done the design guide, right?
We have design guidelines. I mean, you can, you can, you know, you can put in about retaining small-town character, but I say too much always, um, that won't stop me, I just acknowledge it. The first part that says homeowners have a difficult time finding people who can build appropriately these various historic Jim cracks and giga's that go on these old houses. Then somehow, by creating a picture of it, those contractors are going to mysteriously appear and say, shucks, now that I have a picture of it, I know what to do, and the homeowner is gonna say, well, I can get this at Lowe's for two thousand dollars, and you're gonna charge me nine. Okay, it's in the picture book, so I'll pay nine. I don't know what they're thinking of, whoever wrote this.
And, and, and that is the crux.
When you've got a, an, an old home like that.
Absolutely. You can
All the pictures in the world and all the best intentions in the world, but find a plasterer.
We, we are not the type of community like Roland Park.
No, you don't have the money to do that.
I've got somebody now doing some work who keeps telling me, oh, this reminds me of Roland Park, and I say, no, it doesn't. No, it doesn't, this is about a third of the value of, of, of the little shacks down there.
If it does, you're in trouble.
If you could pick this house up and move it to Roland Park.
I, I want fixed price on this, it's, and we agreed on it before he would, we'd come in the door, cause it's just, we're not, we're not Roland Park. But you can find people to do it, but you're gonna pay an arm and a leg.
Who knows?
And it's just, that doesn't really add to the community, because the people aren't, they're not gonna do it.
So, we're definitely not going with pictures.
Yeah.
I don't care what anybody says.
I, I don't, I don't think it hurts having design guidelines, so
We have the design guidelines. And maybe we look at those And maybe we look at those two as we, you know.
Looks like we got over here encourage, you know.
Encourage and review.
Yeah.
I mean, you could, you could, you could leave, even you could leave the first paragraph. And then talk about encouraging, um, people to use traditional materials and designs when possible. Plus, you know, if you, yeah.
This isn't Williamsburg.
This isn't Williamsburg. And you don't wanna make it Williamsburg because you wanna be able to sell your house eventually. And if somebody else wants to put a four thousand dollar front door on, they will.
I know, Union Town is a perfect example of.
Yeah.
Of trying to do anything, you know, to your home.
And I love Union Town, and it was great, but I sat with the, um, the, the Historic Commission or whatever it was called for the year and a half of when I worked at the county. And, okay, yeah, a standing seam tin roof is what's really required on this property. But the lady who owns it's seventy-two years old, and a standing seam tin roof was gonna cost her like thirty-two thousand dollars. Well, all the others are standing seam tin, well, fine.
All eight of the other houses.
All the other houses, and it was a whole hoo-ha.
Yeah.
Let's just say it was a whole hoo-ha. So you, you gotta be, you gotta, you know, you gotta bloom where you're planted, as my grandmother would say. And you just have to know what you can do and what you can't do. What your, you know, you gotta know the territory, as the song from The Music Man says.
So scratch pattern book.
No pattern.
Yeah, I scratched that every.
Keep the guidelines.
I know where they get Michelle for Christmas, we're gonna get a little.
Butterick, they were the fancy clothes, Butterick patterns. I haven't thought of any of that stuff in forty years, I can't believe it all comes back to me.
And, and you don't escape, cause it says right in here, the town and the county should publish it. Not, not, you know, consider, no, should publish it.
You guys can come out every weekend and take pictures, do like artist renderings.
And I, I don't, I don't really object too much to the, sit there and talk, the, the illustrate key components such as shape of windows, doors, roofs, that can be shown to developers and are, that are compatible for tradition, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, there's plenty to save in there.
So developing design guidelines. I mean, we, we, we already, I don't think, we didn't do that actually with, like, windows.
I don't think we did it that intensely, no, so, you know.
We could leave that in here, that, that, to, for somebody that really is energetic.
There was discussion when we were doing the design guidelines.
Back when there was two developments potentially.
Yeah.
Yeah. Potentially, we're coming. But.
But you also have to do something that you can enforce.
Yeah.
With your, you know, three and a half member staff.
Hey, it's a lot more than we had back.
I know it is, I know it is. I remember when the staff was the mayor and the town clerk.
That's right, cause before there was a Barney Town Manager. Yeah, okay. So if we were to put in here a recommendation to develop guidelines, it does, I mean, it's a, it's a recommendation, it doesn't mean that the community or the town staff would have to go do it, it's just a recommendation.
Yeah. You could also put in here that you recommend, you know, occasional reviews of the design guidelines to assure that they're continuing to serve the community for some silly plan or speak.
So many of these buildings and homes have been, they've been, you know, remodeled through the years so many different times. How do you know, at what point do you go back?
You're not gonna make that apartment house into a hardware store ever again.
Yeah.
I was thinking about getting vinyl siding on the side of my house, so maybe, you know, cause you can still get back to the brick someday. As we aren't at that, I mean, I, my belief was back when they got those little bronze plaques, that the town did wanna develop guidelines. Because at that time, I recall in the early two thousands, there were a lot more, there were state programs. I remember going to a couple sessions down to the old Fifth Regiment Armory for tax credits. And the hoops you had to jump through to get those, and the amount of money you had to spend before it was really worthwhile. And of course, you couldn't do anything where it was really visible, it had to be around the side. So we tone it down from guidelines and power or pattern book to just guidelines and enhance, or, or review, design guidelines, that we wanna have in here to get into some of this detail like this about, you know, illustrations such as shapes of windows and doors and roof pitches. Or just leave it generic as the guidelines.
I mean, if, if this stuff is not in a code, nothing enforceable, I mean.
Yeah, I would beat in here.
Yeah, we're so, we gotta keep it generic, but if it doesn't, you know, it would, this is coming attraction, but after we're through doing this, then we really do need to start taking a look at the code, cause I haven't really looked at that in a while. There are some areas that we need to go through. And that would be a way to shore up some of this, if that's what the discussion leads towards. But we don't know, it's not like there's a lot of land that could be annexed. We certainly don't have any developments that are in, in works that are being discussed where it would be necessary to have this, but I don't think we wanna shut the door. But I guess that's where the code would come in, we would have in the code, yeah.
I mean, if you're, if you're a developer, let's say there, there is something that is consistent with the town and could be annexed in. And, and another hundred homes go up. They're not looking to the plan as part of their review, they're looking to the code right now. You do wanna make sure before they come knocking at the door, that what you've got in place is what you want to see if they come knocking at the door. So yeah, that definitely, the design guidelines, at signs, are the next thing that we have to look at. But putting more or less language in here is not really gonna affect the review process.
Because we aren't as affluent as Northwest DC. But the, the ages of the homes are pretty comparable.
Yeah.
And, and, and before COVID, what was going on down there was, cause I, I used to live in Thurmine, and I had a good friend of mine that was a roofer, and he would go down there all the time, cause that's where the money was. And they were taking properties that, that looked fine.
Mm-hmm, tearing them down.
Down and rebuilding the McMansions. So I do think we wanna have some guidelines because, you know, Bob's house isn't gonna last forever. His wooden clapboard, my guess is my brick's gonna last longer than his, but it was, I see what doesn't get done over there, I think eventually it's gonna have to have work done. And, you know, I, I guess you know better than I do, often it's cheaper to tear down than rebuild, and it is to go and renovate. So, but it's the code, I guess, that protects it.
Code is what controls. This directs, the code controls.
So we just keep it generic, encourage review, design guidelines, okay?
And eliminate pattern book.
Small town character, keep the first paragraph.
I don't wanna be the one that has to tell Gary, he has to go out and take pictures of the entire town and put it in a book.
Well, I have told Gary what's coming, when I have three hundred and ninety-nine days until I retire.
Oh, God love you.
Not that I'm counting, but it's three ninety-nine, I finally got.
Workdays, not weekends. Ooh, calendar days, you're almost there.
PTO day, so it's calendar days, three ninety-nine.
Wow.
And when I do, I said, the first thing I'm gonna do is come over here and offer my services. Cause I, you know, I can do things that'll day and night.
How difficult it is to change those fancy locks on that door that you need the Allen wrench for?
Yeah, I have my own Allen wrenches, I was just checking that out so I can get in, cause nobody will ever give me a key.
No, a lot of these things are, are conceptually fine and interesting, but they're just impractical in this environment.
I think six will cover.
I think six is fine.
Six will cover what, you know, that review into town codes.
Yeah, I think six is fine.
So the third paragraph out of five will disappear. There, we're talking about remodeling a front door, Rita, the whatever, whatever, okay? So before we get to six, cause I agree with that, but with five, the first paragraph stays. We can keep most of the second paragraph, we're scratching the words pattern book. Stay with design guidelines. And I would suggest that in collaboration, the town, New Windsor, and the county could publish. Could, as opposed to should.
We can.
Rainbows and puppies, rainbows and puppies.
I mean, the county doesn't have a pattern book, do they?
Cause they don't have the small town character.
Oh, yeah.
They're the big city character.
Big city people.
So I think I heard Drew make a motion that we keep six? Yeah, I had no notes on that.
Kind of disgusted, you know, to, to give any teeth to the code.
It has all the teeth it needs. I mean, really, all it says is be careful and make sure that when you're looking at your code things, you, you don't do anything unintentionally. It's always a good plan.
You don't do anything unintentionally. I do, most of my life I do things unintentionally, I didn't know.
Just stop.
I'm a male.
Oh, that's true.
See, chronic male syndrome, CMS.
I didn't say that, you said that.
But it's intentionally unintentional.
They're mo's, huh, they're doing great.
I really should watch these to see what kinda things I say. Yeah, how about them mo's? Okay. Uh, number seven. It's got my favorite word in there. Do we have an annexation plan?
No, an annexation plan is, is not this kind of plan. It would be specific if someone wanted to annex in, then there has to be an annexation plan, and you have to go through what the public services are, and it's in the state law, that's what an annexation plan is.
Annexation plan, okay. Cause I do like it, and limitations of infrastructure is mentioned in here.
Well, that's always something you have to look at with annexations. And actually, in, in an annexation environment, a lot of this becomes more important than it would be otherwise sitting on a shelf. Because your annexations have to be consistent with your master plan, especially particularly your municipal growth areas. So, um, we just, you have to be aware of that when we're doing these things.
When you're in an annexation mode, you're in a growth mode. And I would, I would think you're gonna have paid professionals that are kind of doing what we're doing here as we're.
Your assumption is that the town is in a growth mode. But my experience, which is admittedly limited, it is much more common for the property owner to want to come into town for his or her own development purposes. And then the town has to decide if it is in growth mode and wants to annex, cause it is completely within the town's purview to determine if they wanna annex. And somebody could come in to every council meeting for the next ten years and say, please, please, please annex me, and you don't have to.
Okay. So, and, and with my little view of the world, because I'm not having been about, that was actually a question I was going to ask you, because I think of annexation, it's because it's an effort, because I want to expand, I wanna grow my town. I'm in an area with all kinda fields around, and, you know, I have the.
Well, if you, if you go back case law wise, forty, maybe fifty years, a lot of the case law that you see about annexation and related issues was that, and it came from down, down there, Prince George's, Montgomery, uh, the Poolsville. I swear, two thirds of the zoning cases in the law books come out of Poolsville, I don't know what they do down there. But the governmental entities there annexed in, from genocide, the genesis of the annexation was the government. Up here, that, that my, just what I know, it is more likely the other way around. Now, sometimes the, the, the annexation, the property owner and the municipality are like, it makes perfect sense. You come in, we can develop, you will get your, your, your taxes, you'll get our services, happy, happy joy, joy. And as I say, you, you, no one can force a, a town to annex it, its property. So there has to be a certain degree of harmony when you're doing those things. But that's when your annexation plan comes in, it's also now, uh, when you're more likely to see a Developers' Rights and Responsibilities Agreement. We haven't gotten to anywhere near that yet, um, here in town, but, uh, so I don't know how I got off on that, but.
But there's different types of annexations too. It's not just developers coming in and trying to add to the wood and sill and all that, there's, you have like a little strip of land and somebody wants to connect two properties to, or something like that.
We've had a couple of those out along Old New Windsor Road.
Or if you needed to expand the waste treatment plant, as an example, you need to annex some land because of that from a local farmer or from the county, I think that was me, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Everybody goes.
Starting to get the West Coast giving me updates on the oil game, sorry. I'm here on the East Coast, why are you telling me from the West Coast? Okay. Well, thank you for that, cause I, it was a question that I wanted to ask in anticipation that eventually we'll be having discussions along these lines. And I actually should have asked that question earlier, has anything come up on that yet? Cause I know you did a writing, a comment to us.
I'm not aware if that has happened.
I think there was a discussion, uh, last month briefly, uh, with, with Dave about the question about, you know, and the potential, uh, land, man, land owner nearby and nearby potentially could come in, wanna annex, be annexed into town. But until they start the process by asking, we don't know.
Hasn't gotten beyond the conversation stage, and that's why we need to not be putting it all over the television.
We wanna, we got ten minutes, we could probably get through the fiscal implications quickly.
Especially since they're all none.
Yeah, yes.
One.
There might be costs, but we don't know what.
I think we're gonna hire a, what was it, a?
I think a full-time Main Street manager for thirty K is probably unlikely.
I just scratched that altogether, number four. How much do you think we should pay for this pattern book? I have a question. Why would we hire somebody to do that? I would think that we would just, could come up with the guidelines that we, you know, seem relevant to us. And I put 30 to 50, just knowing, knowing what consultants do. But I'm not sure if the town's gonna want to spend the money to do that because we, it's not like we have other properties that are gonna be coming in. So do we even want to put a dollar amount in here? Town could choose.
Between Union Bridge and New Windsor does work. I mean, that would be like a problem.
Mike Reynolds?
Yeah, it'd be like a project maybe that he could undertake or.
I don't, I don't know if that fits within his rubric.
He's a grant writer.
Yeah, I don't know exactly how much flexibility of that we have.
Flexibility, because every time I try to use him.
Yeah, he does grants.
Oh, okay.
Maybe we could get a grant for design guidelines.
You don't forget dollar figures.
Yeah, to me, I wouldn't even put him, keeping that in.
Well, I think put, I think putting.
Well, you know, it's a part-time job. You, you know, you, you, there's nothing that says you can't do that, is there? I guess that'd be a conflict.
Sit still for 10 years. That's, that's exactly.
I can't imagine how boring this must be sitting over there. I'm sorry, guys.
Now 50 to 100.
Oh, at least, yeah.
I appreciate you both can stay awake. Couldn't get them to sing or dance, so I, I got nothing. I did, I did agree with number two, review and revise the New Windsor sign code to ensure signs improve the aesthetics of the town. I thought that was a good one. Encourage the redevelopment, tax credit eligible historic properties in town.
We got rid of that.
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah, let's, yeah.
Exactly. So Emily Anne, we scratched three, we scratched four.
Move, get rid of pattern book.
You may not have gotten this message, Emily Anne, but, but we're gonna take pattern book out. Okay. That's 145. We're done. 11 and 12 this tonight. I'm sorry. I thought we'd go further. Okay. Announcements. Where are the minutes?
Assembly crab feed, the 16th of September.
And of course, music on the main is on October 7th. So, and I, I know that you're planning to be there for that. You have to uphold tradition. Well, both of you should come actually because Abigail came last year. And the rain and the torrential downpour that we had.
Lovely time.
It was a nice day going.
Turned out to be a very nice affair.
I tell you what, the guy we have here in town that does pit beef and turkey and pit ham, I'll put him against anybody in the world. And it's his own thing. That's Steve Strausberg's own machine thing there. Oh my God, he, he'll get like 40 pieces of meat and he smokes that stuff. That turkey melts in your mouth. I, I, I try them all over the place. Nobody beats his. Ladies will be there with their fried fish and then we have the reggae band. The reggae band's back. Anybody else know who's coming? I think Rebecca and Dempsey are playing. The cover guy we couldn't get this year because he has gotten too expensive. He could do Elton John, he would do Sting. He, he was really good. But the reggae band, those guys are awesome.
Young people, I love, I could listen to them all day.
Those guys are really good. It gets everybody dancing in the street. We already did National Night Out, music on the main we mentioned. So our next meeting is Monday, the 25th of September. Some people won't be here because they're West Coast. You and Drew are going?
Yeah, we're going together, but don't tell his wife.
Okay. And I didn't have the next date, but obviously it's in October sometime. Oh, I do have it up here. October 23rd, then we start running into Thanksgiving and Christmas. So my hope was, because we're getting, we're getting close.
Real close to boilerplate stuff here.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that we're getting, we can, I'd like to think we could wrap this up in the next two meetings. Then have a break for the holidays and then we're gonna have to get all back together again with, to see what Emily Anne is able to make out of this for us. But by the late winter, we should be wrapping this up and charging into a review of the code.
Charging into the code.
It doesn't get any better. They.
Doesn't charge back to the breach.
You haven't lived. It gets really cool. And we're gonna start with signs.
We're not all of the code. You don't have to do all of the code.
We should. It's so much fun. I want to get to measuring. I want to go with easements. I want, I. And banners. I want to talk banners.
No banners. No alleys, no banners.
All right. Any other announcements? Hope's dreams. No? All right. I gotta get a motion to, we're gonna leave early tonight.
A motion.
Sure.
A motion from Kevin. Second by Gary. All voters in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're outta here. See ya.